Meeting. All right, I'd like to call to order the Hinkley Township special meeting on November 22nd, 2022 at four o'clock PM. This is for the purpose of one, a work session, and two, to approve the 2023 Kimball opt-out list into forward required list to Kimball. We have everyone in attendance, trustee Astral, trustee Sweattick, trustee Augustine. And you know what, trustee Astral, I'm gonna go straight over to you since I know yours is one of our reasons for meeting today.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the 2023 Kimball opt-out list consisting of 170 properties.
Second.
Second by Sweattick, and I'm gonna do a roll call just because it's a resolution. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine is a yes. Perfect, and we were moving forward with the information regarding the handbook, but really quickly before we get into that, one of the topics that Suzanne had brought up to me that I wanted to talk to you about was our organizational meeting minutes. So that typically happens in January. And if you look at our calendars for January, our first meeting is January 2nd, I'm sorry, January 3rd. And traditionally, we meet for the organizational meeting at least a day or that morning in advance so Martha can put the meeting minutes for us to read off of at the trustee meeting. So that would be typically Suzanne, like Tuesday morning. I don't know that I'm gonna be available Tuesday morning, so I wanted to reach out to both of you and see what your thoughts were.
I am not sure at this point if I would be available on Tuesday morning. Monday, anytime after four, I would be available, although is that the holiday since?
The second.
Yeah, the second observed holiday, so. I may be able to meet in the morning on the third, like around eight, if we plan for like eight till 10. But I would have to get back to you on that.
That's fine, I just wanted you to at least think about it. We have time that we can kind of construct this, but at least we can start.
Yeah, I was actually looking at that last night. I'm like, oh wow, that's right at the beginning.
Right at the beginning, and then we have to kind of get it organized so that the zoning commission is set up to have their first meeting on Thursday because they can't meet as a board until we appoint them. Okay, so perfect, so you guys want to get back to the handbook?
Rock.
Are you excited?
I don't know if you guys did all the formatting, I don't know if you have any issues with it.
I have not opened it yet, to be honest with you, because I thought if I open it.
And start picking at it.
Right, that is what you sent us last week after the meeting, correct?
I have Martha's changes. I did look at yours yesterday. So what I think is probably best practice right now, Jack, since you're the one who's been navigating that those changes is just to have you keep doing it. And you give it back to us at the end when we're completely done and we see something else, we can always go in and.
You're doing such a fantastic job.
Yeah, we.
We decided you can keep up.
So I have that we ended at E for 2.13, which is return of property. Is that about where you guys have, yep, ended?
No, just because, I'm gonna have you guys scroll through this real quick. In 1.3 I took out, since our business is constantly changing because we're not a business, I took that out of there.
And where is that?
No, 1.3.
1.3. Yeah, that was something that I was thinking about too. So we're just gonna say the Township expressly reserves, okay. Hello, Martha.
Hello, guys. You can, those are those other two policies.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
You too. Okay, is there anything else in that section or prior to that you want to go over?
No.
So you want to go back to E? Return of property?
Working my way down real quick. Oh, under 2.14A, we talked about all, we added in there about township equipment is property township, but there's a section further on down about return of equipment.
2.14A.
Yeah, the third paragraph we added.
Now, I'm just thinking that you made changes to your sections, so your 2.14 might be different than my 2.14 because we changed.
Township equipment, use of equipment.
It's, I think it's the same, Melissa, it was just the page numbers that we're changing.
Right.
Because he was.
That was one of the things we were gonna add.
I did add them in.
Okay, so I'm not looking at your thing, I'm looking at my hard copy. So it was return use of equipment.
Use of equipment, we added third paragraph, all issued township equipment is property township, but there is a section further on down that speaks to return of equipment specifically.
So you don't feel it's necessary?
Yeah, E in that same section, the return of property.
Which is where I just was.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that paragraph out that we inserted because it's.
He covers it.
He covers it.
You know that we are removing that. That's really well written too, that's a shame. You did a good job. Okay, and then PDA was changed to personal. Electronic device, got it. And that was done, so in the first section of return of property?
That was done in B. That's where the first occurred, PDAs.
Okay, but when we go to return of property, is it there too?
Yes, and he has it changed on head version.
Okay, perfect. And then in the last paragraph on E, return of property, we had said, as a condition of being able to use the above equipment, the employee agrees that the township may withhold from the employee's check or final paycheck. Do we take the apostrophe out of employees? Are we keeping that there?
It's the employee's check, it's possessive.
I just have a line there, but I don't know why.
I don't even think we got that far, and I think it should be the apostrophe.
Yeah, I don't think we got that far either, I'm just trying to move this forward. Okay. 2.14. Witness.
2.15, right?
Well, it is now, that's what I'm saying. My hard copy that I've been writing notes on for the past like three weeks is different because he changed, we made some changes, and he already has adopted them. So that's why I'm going through the specific title.
The numbering didn't change.
Yeah, because we inserted, yeah, we inserted a number. Oh, we.
The code of ethics or.
That, that, oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
We changed it.
You're right.
That's exactly right, Suzanne. Okay. So witness policy, any comments on this?
I do not.
I do not.
I was a little confused that it says this policy sets forth the protocol to be followed by all personnel except police officers when responding to requests for interviews. We have fire personnel that do interviews too. Now, the fire personnel have their own handbook. So they wouldn't necessarily follow this handbook, but the police have their own handbook too.
Right.
So I don't know if we want to put it in there just to cover both or take them both out.
I think it should just be taken out because they do both have their own handbook.
I would just say all personnel.
I would just follow by all personnel.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And it removed the except police officers.
Okay, good, I agree with that, do you agree with that, Jack? That's the first line of witness, because they're not gonna be receiving this handbook. It's silly to have them listed. The only police. Yeah, the two police personnel would be Kumi and Chief Sutter. But if we say personnel, by all personnel, I think we cover them.
Agreed.
And then if we go down to, you see number one is request for interviews, and then it says A and B. Again, A is listing the fire department.
Well, it doesn't say fire, it says actions taken when responding to fire emergency rescue.
No, no, it says advise the person, A, advise the person requesting the interview that all such requests for interviews must be initially addressed to the most senior person, yeah.
Is this also meaning that, say for instance, someone called the township for information on a fire incident that I would not be the one to answer questions, I would defer it to the fire department or police department.
Well, that's the other thing, is it says senior person throughout this whole section, and I think it should be chief and/or liaison, there's something to that because you wouldn't answer questions. So in the case of a fire department, all requests for interviews must be addressed to the fire chief. I'm not sure that needs to be in here if a fire department has their own handbook.
Well, but is this is is this covering off so that, for instance, like what Suzanne just said, this answers those questions, so that if someone called the office and asked Suzanne a question, she's going to refer them to the fire chief or the liaison for the fire department. That's how I'm reading this, that's what that means. So it's not, it's not saying that this impacts the fire department or the police department, it's saying where the chain of command is, basically.
So if we're going to leave it as is, as per what you just said, chain of command, do we want to include that the police department, all those requests will go to the police chief?
Yes, you can add that in. But that's how I'm reading it, Jack, is that how you're reading it?
Because. I don't know why that sentence is even in there, because the first sentence is most senior person in the department, the fire department is the chief, the police department is the chief.
I feel like A and B kind of run into each other. I kind of feel like they're both saying the same thing and using different words.
Well, maybe we could combine them.
I combined B and A, you want to take out this sentence about the fire chief?
Yeah. Of course, Brian Richter will have to look at it, so we'll have to just put a line through it, but. So maybe we say advise the person requesting the interview that all such parties for interviews must be initially addressed to the most senior person in that department.
And then take out and then stop with that, don't say anything else.
And then move B up into paragraph A?
Yes.
Yes. I can see why she did it as a separate bullet point.
I can see why, but it's just, I mean, why use five words when three will do? That's kind of, and I feel it cuts down on the chance of it being misinterpreted.
So do we want to leave senior person, because that is peppered throughout this whole section and into into two and three?
I would, I mean, I would, I don't have a problem with that, does anybody else?
That way, Mike gets a call, he can handle it too. Like if you get a call for an interview, you're the most senior person in your department.
Yeah, that can be taken out also.
Yeah, it's already saying that.
Which one is that, compile, complete?
Report, the report through a request for interview to the most senior person in the department, that's been stated three different times.
No, you're telling the caller to call them, and then that's saying let the senior department person know that you're referring someone to them. It's like.
So giving a heads up.
Yeah.
Giving a heads up.
Yeah.
Well, if we're keeping this separate, I would keep these separate too, so you have three points that these people need to follow, our staff needs to follow.
So refrain, it goes back to B?
Yeah. Because then they really shouldn't be talking about it or answering any questions until they get clearance from their senior person. We're gonna get really far tonight, I just have a feeling.
Keep going, keep going, keep going.
All right, number two, are we gonna leave senior person in this section as well? Okay, if you go to B, it says establish a time and, I don't know.
And date.
Do we need a, I don't know if that's a period or comma?
I got rid of it.
Thank you. I was gonna get rid of it too.
It was a grammar thing. Okay, what else?
Any other changes to that, number two?
I do not.
I do not either. Number three, I don't know if we want to mention the Hinkley Township open records policy or just leave it as is. Thoughts?
I would leave it as is.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. 2.15, weapons in the workplace, I think we should get rid of the A where it says policy and just call it weapons in the workplace policy.
So just name 2.1, 2.15 on yours, 2.16 on ours.
Yes.
Weapons in the workplace policy.
Yes.
Remove A and have all of that underneath.
Yeah.
Weapons in the workplace.
What happens to B?
B becomes A.
B becomes A.
It becomes part of it?
I made it A.
Well, you shouldn't have an A without a B.
I agree.
Well, we can just, it doesn't have to do anything, it can just be a paragraph under policy.
Yeah, I would do that.
I don't even know if this is legal anymore, so we have to have Brian Richter look at that. But it lists firefighters as well. The first paragraph, second sentence, this policy applies to all employees, firefighters, contract and temporary employees, visitors on the property, customers and contractors.
I think that is mentioning firefighters, just so that, again, the non-union personnel know who this applies to. This applies to essentially everyone except police.
Do you agree, Jack?
Yeah, I had a question too, that, does the lack of signage?
You want something about lack of signage, or do you have?
It says, you know, signs will indicate where arms are not to be carried in touch with. Does the absence of signage affect the enforcement?
I would say no, it's the policy.
Okay.
But township needs to be capitalized.
Are you saying, does it affect enforcement to not the employee, but to?
Yeah. So it shouldn't be the manual, you're right. Where does township need, I might have changed it already.
Says, one, two, three, third paragraph down, the township's ownership or control.
Third paragraph?
Yeah.
Township covers policy.
The township property covered by this policy includes without limitation, keep going past ball fields, playgrounds, under the townships.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
And then we agreed that the no-fire arms or other weapons signs will just be a part of that policy.
Yeah, so we are just removing A and B, perfect, and renaming it.
Okay, section three, if everyone's in agreement to move on. 3.1 pay periods and pay days.
Is this the one that Martha had?
I have a question on the last one, are you gonna have Richter look at that policy?
Yes, I did say that.
That is ever-changing.
Yeah, I just, I'm a little nervous about putting it in there and having it.
Like I said, per, I think, I know one of them's changed that people can carry in their vehicles now on township premises, as long as it stays locked in their vehicles.
Their vehicles, not a township vehicle.
Exactly. And their personal stuff.
So we look at it.
I just would have Richter look at that before you sign that.
Yeah, I def, I mean, he's gonna look at the whole document, much to his utter dismay. But I think it specifies township vehicles in the policy.
Did you see this was on the first one that Martha emailed us, was 3.1?
Yes, I have it here in front of me. Now, really quick, before we get to what Martha gave us, if we go to page 11 of the old manual, do you have the old manual?
We do.
Page 11, section 2.1.
Fake numbers on it?
I know I wrote it wrong, I think it's, yeah, it's section 12. I'm sorry, page 12, section 2.14. I wrote the wrong page. It's work weekend hours. And there's a part of that first paragraph that I think should be inserted in here.
This one that I have is not numbered, so what was that section?
Section 2.14 of the old, do you have the old one, Monique?
2.1, where's 2.4 from?
The new one. Without the changes.
I can read it to you while you look for it. It says, in general, the normal work week for full-time township employees is five days per week, usually Monday through Friday. Generally, the normal work day is from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM with a lunch period of uniform duration established by the department head to meet the operating needs of the department. Due to special weather conditions, these working hours may be varied. And I think it's really important specifically for the, to outline what our hours are for our employees, and the weather component is very important to me for the service department. It says two paid rest breaks are normally scheduled by the immediate supervisor, one to be taken in the first half of the workday and one to be taken in the second half of the workday. Breaks shall not start or end at the lunch period. Rest breaks and lunch periods cannot be used to make up tardiness when early or for overtime assignment. I think that's an important paragraph to put in right here at the beginning of pay periods and paydays.
Well, did you see that further on down?
No.
It looks like it's in 3.4. Rest meal and meal periods, in general, normal work week.
You're right, correct. Actually, I have it here to add it on that page, but I didn't get that part.
So it's already in there, so we can disregard that.
But I'm, can we put it under 3.1 so it kind of starts, starts our outline of what our days look like for our staff?
Well, 3.1 is talking about pay periods.
That's fine, we can leave it.
Yeah.
But maybe we need to rename 3.14, because it's not just rest and meal periods, it's workday hours as well.
Worked hours, rest and meal periods.
And I'm gonna add something to that section once we get to it, so we'll go back to 3.1, I apologize, got off track there. Do you have any changes to the first paragraph of 3.1 outside of Martha's changes? Martha's changes are significant. She said employees are paid on a weekly basis. Warrants are distributed by the township fiscal officer, all employees are paid by check or direct deposit, and that's it.
Works for me. Bi-weekly. She didn't cross out bi.
You're right. I'm still fighting the urge, I know I need reading glasses, but I'm fighting it.
Good luck with that.
I know, I need it. All right, so is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes, with Martha's changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Jack, you're in agreement as well?
Yep.
Okay, so in addition, one of the things in that second paragraph was time clocks, so it'd be used to record time worked and time off. Are we still using time cards anywhere? And if so, why?
You use a time clock?
Don't even turn them in, because you can't write on them anymore, so that's why we write everything on the sheets.
Can't write on them. Why not?
Because the ink bleeds. It's like one of those thermotime clocks now. You go to write on, as soon as you wipe your hand across, because it's like they're.
Is there any benefit to having them, it sounds to me like you're doubling the same process.
We're doing two, yeah, because we do the time sheets and we do the time clocks.
So it's repetitive.
Because I have to call the guys in regardless, so I know what time they get in and get out.
And your department's the only one doing that, which is silly for four people, in my opinion.
That thing wasn't cheap to replace either.
I would just think that helps you remember, if you're punching something, it helps you remember when you're filling out that, because do you fill out your time sheet once every two weeks?
No, we're doing it the day of.
You do it.
Every day, those guys sit down and fill out what they did and where the time goes.
And in the old version, it said in parentheses, time sheets or time cards, didn't say both, kind of.
We do like, like I said, it's like a two-step process, so, up there.
I don't think that's necessary.
It's an extra expense for the cars.
That bleed.
Yes.
So can we just agree to write that time cards or time sheets? Sheets, what you prefer, not cards.
We use sheets, yeah, because then we have the note section underneath for, especially, I think for a T is what we write down for what we're doing, why we're here anyway. It's all documented that way. I have copies of all that up here, and then Martha has the other copy, she gets the hard copies, I need a photocopy.
Yeah, I think time sheets do already record time worked and time off. I would, I would change clock to sheets. And if you're in agreement, the second sentence would then change, instead of punch, it would say track.
What do you think?
Good thinking.
Because we sign off on the timesheets.
Mm-hmm.
That's what Martha gets. She's not getting the time cards. Who's seeing the time cards? Just you, Mike?
It just stays up in the folder with the sheets.
That's fine. Just remove it.
Three, Jack?
I'm just gonna change it to, uh. Timesheets, that'll be the first word, shall be used.
Perfect. And then the second sentence, can we change instead of punch to track? And I see it twice. It's third time in the third sentence. Correct?
What do you want that changed?
Track.
To.
And it says punch out, so we'd have to get rid of punch out.
Just take that sentence out.
The third one?
Except for rest periods and lunchtime. Yeah.
I was taking the second one out.
You can take them both out because they're not punching anything. Because we don't see that anyways in, um, the timesheets, you know, like the breaks or anything.
Well, we're tracking the beginning of the day and the end of the day.
Right.
So that second sentence is viable. We don't really need to track the rest periods.
Correct.
We're leaning on our department heads to make sure that that's facilitated.
We'll record, we've created a recorder.
But I think that we should keep in that third sentence, employees must track any time they are absent from work during the day. So like if somebody's leaving for half-day. That would be for doctor's appointment or, you know, whatever.
And that's still your time off sheets, like the guys have to sign.
They're already doing that.
Yeah, so if we can get rid of except for rest periods and lunchtimes and just say employees must track any time they are absent from work during the day. And then Suzanne, did you have anything that you wanted to add as the cemetery section for this spot?
Um. I don't think I had anything here. I think we were, I was looking at something in three point four. Like in a flexible schedule.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay, we, and you and I did talk about that. I'm, I think I wrote notes on that. Alright, so Jack.
One, this is, employees are required to record the start and end time of their workday. And then what's the next sentence, except for the rest period?
We're gonna get rid of except for rest periods and lunchtime and just leave employees must track any time they are absent from work during the day.
Employees must record any time they are absent.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Leave the last sentence.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, three point one two, not three point one two to you. Are you on three point three overtime?
Overtime.
Okay. Um. The third paragraph, all overtime work by non-exempt employees must be authorized in advance by their manager. I think it should say department head or trustee liaison. I would probably say just a department head, not manager.
Well, the department head needs to get approval too.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Well, I think if there's an emergency.
Doesn't say that.
Well, that's what I was gonna add, some type of language.
If you don't let me authorize the guys, I will be calling you guys at two in the morning.
Right.
Someone answers.
So Mike is gonna be your.
Jack Rhodes.
Right.
But.
Right, but I think if you put manager.
Snow events, you have authorization already.
But you have to put an emergency clause on there then.
I do agree that emergency overtime should be definitely addressed here.
That covers my butt.
You know, if there's a tree down in the middle of the road, snowstorm.
I actually, I think it should be left how it's written because must be authorized in advance by their manager. Mike is the manager of the guys in the department.
We're trying to, I, I, I completely agree with you, but really not using manager in the document at all. We're trying to change it to department head, so it's more fitting to township.
Well, and or the department head and or.
We're trustee liaison.
And that's what I suggested. I have no problem with that. Something happens, Mike's out of town. A snowstorm comes. They can call you, Jack.
I really would address an emergency.
That's the next thing we're gonna get to. We'll have to put some language in there because emergency overtime does happen. Um, so do we want to say emergency overtime must be authorized by trustee liaison?
Well, really only talking about you.
That's not true. Cemeteries have stuff, have emergency stuff that pops up.
Emergency?
Yep. Your police chief will have emergency stuff that pops up.
What's an emergency with a cemetery?
I could have my hours in by Friday. I'd have to come in on Saturday to address cemetery. Whether it's selling a lot or some of those issues.
But you would know that on Friday.
Not necessarily.
Then if your hours are in, how are they getting ahold of you to say?
Yeah. How would they get ahold of you on Friday evening? And what? I, I don't understand why someone would reach out to you on Friday night and have an emergency that they need to be seen on Saturday.
Well, we have, there are situations where I need to be available on Saturdays and Sundays. And not that I'm saying it's an emergency, but there are times where I've had to come in and take care of cemetery business on a Saturday or Sunday.
Right.
Being the section, I can't just count on a Monday through Friday schedule.
Right.
I need to be accommodating for Saturdays and Sundays.
Right, which is why, but that's not an emergency. That's why you have, you have flex time that you can, especially with Lynn as support in the office. You have the ability to.
My hours in by Friday, when I need to take care of business on a Saturday or Sunday. That's exceeding my hours.
Right, but you're gonna know that ahead of time. You're gonna know that before Friday afternoon, if you have to come in on a Saturday or a Sunday.
That's not necessarily. I've gotten calls on Saturday mornings saying I have to be at the cemetery because it has popped up and we don't have staffing to be up there to collect the fees and the paperwork that coincide with a burial.
How do they get in there without telling us? How do they?
I mean, I'm just saying, it, it has happened. I, I stood up at that cemetery multiple times, at least seven times while I've been a trustee.
As an emergency, that you had no warning?
Yeah, we, I didn't know. I would get a call on Saturday morning and say, hey, I need you to be there.
Well, that, I, I would just think that comes down to planning, not emergency. I mean, a funeral doesn't just happen like that, that Friday evening, all of a sudden, there's gonna be a funeral on Saturday morning. That's. I just, I can't see how that would happen. There, you would know about it at least twenty-four hours.
I think if we put something in here that says emergency overtime is to be authorized by trustee liaison, we cover all of our departments. And you have to trust your other trustees.
I just only see that applying to the road.
Regardless, it needs to be in here in some capacity.
Well, outside, let's see, that's the, the first sense, all overtime. Must be authorized in advance by, I would say that should be trustee liaison, period. Now we can, then I would say go on to say, in emergency situations. Overtime may be approved by the department head or trustee liaison.
So do you wanna say all overtime worked, including emergencies by non-exempt employees must be authorized in advance by department head or trustee liaison?
No, I just said, all overtime by non-exempt must be authorized in advance by their trustee liaison.
So if the roads are really bad, you're gonna get a call.
Then I said, the second sentence is, in emergency situations. Overtime may be approved by the department head or trustee liaison.
Either way, you're covering, because I don't, if I'm the department head, I don't, I'm not gonna report to my department head. I'm gonna report to my trustee liaison. Mike would do the same, right?
For the most part.
So Mike would report to you. The guys would report to Mike, Mike would report to you, and Suzanne would, would report to Melissa.
That's the way it's always been. We, we trust our department heads to be the, the reporting entity so that we're not getting called.
Right, I, I, and, and I understand that, and I'm not saying that we don't trust our department heads, but these will not always be the department heads for the township. We're redoing the, the manual for moving forward with it, so we don't wanna have to do this again another five or ten years.
I completely understand that. Completely understand that, and I, I think that we do a good job of our hiring. I just think it's silly to make, so making it two different sentences. When I think it should just probably just be one and just say, in advance by their department head or trustee liaison. I think I could say all overtime worked. And in emergency overtime.
I wanna give him the authority to. Make a decision in an emergency if he can't get ahold of one of the trustees. To have overtime response for a fallen tree or something on some, you know, something like that. So then the department head, like, that's why I'm saying, I think this mostly applies to service. The other ones have their own protocols. But in general, overtime in general, look. We wanna go out and, and work with, uh, we need to put somebody on the project to monitor for paving. Give me a call, you know, and decide whether it's warranted or not.
So you want two different sentences? Can you read them to me one more time?
All overtime worked by non-union employees must be authorized in advance by their trustee liaison. In emergency situations. Overtime may be approved by the department head or the trustee liaison.
I just don't agree with it. I don't wanna get a phone call because one of my staff needs to work overtime and they need to get approval before they can do it. It's just not how we run Hinkley Township in all the years I've been here.
I don't think it's any different than, you know. It, it's, you're extending your work week. I mean, there, there has to be some check and balance there.
I, I understand that, but it's. I think it's micromanaging.
I don't think it's micromanaging.
I think it is. I think it is. That's just my opinion.
I, I think it should be approved.
So all overtime work by non-exempt employees must be authorized by trustee liaison.
How about all non-emergency?
Emergency is gonna have to be also.
Right.
Overtime, I mean, overtime's overtime. Doesn't matter if it's emergency or non-emergency at this point. Um, you just want it all approved by trustee liaison. Yes. I don't agree with that.
I, I think that is our job as liaisons, as, you know, supervisors, that we are making sure all the time is being spent, um, productively. Overtime comes up and emergencies happen and there's extra workload. I get that. And it's gonna be approved, but other times, maybe we just need to be a little bit better with planning. And I think that is our responsibility in this role, is to make sure that, um, every, everybody's making the most of their time.
I think that they do a fantastic job at that and actually oftentimes are working more hours than they're getting paid for.
I think that is our job to ensure that, um, everything's working efficiently and, um, everybody's making the most of their time. Doesn't mean that it's going to be denied. It just means that there's going to be a conversation about it.
I have no problem with a, with a conversation, but it doesn't have to be with me. We have great leadership. We can trust it.
Um, I agree with Jack. I think it should be added in.
We'll put it together and I'll come back and look at it. Once I see it. I think it's gonna come back and bite you. You start getting phone calls all hours. Okay.
How was that sentence ordered, just so I know? Hey, how is that sound?
All overtime work by non-exempt employees must be authorized in advance by their trustee liaison.
Okay, and we're not doing emergency.
In emergency situations, overtime may be approved by the department head or trustee liaison.
Anything in the next paragraph?
I just changed comp to compensatory time.
I have a marker and I don't know if it was by accident or not, after one and a half times. Is there a apostrophe or something?
I took that out.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else in that section. So, the next section, any questions, comments?
Say, uh, second sentence, it's a compensatory time shall be earned instead of granted. And then, at the end of.
What's the old one?
They'll be granted on a time and one-half basis.
Mm-hmm.
You deleted. Did you not, Jack?
Wait a second.
Big section.
I like granted.
Well, yeah, that's what it is, talking about taking, using comp time there.
It's taken straight from the last handbook.
Here's one of the problems with this paragraph. Is that. This says granted time and one half basis. So you're accruing it at time and a half. And then the last sentence says you can cash it out. At time and a half. So that's multiplying. That has to be corrected. So at the end of each calendar, any non-exempt employee with accrued but unused compensatory time.
Shall be paid for that time.
Maybe, may request to cash out their comp time. At the employee's current rate of pay. Not at time and a half, because it's already been accrued at time and a half.
It's been recorded at time and a half. You're not gonna pay it out at time and a half.
That time at one and a half. So when she's saying at that time, maybe we should do what Monique just said and say recorded. Paid for the time recorded at one and a half.
No, it's recorded at time and a half already.
Right.
You don't wanna pay it at time and a half, again.
I, I don't think that that's the intent.
But that's how it reads.
I, I don't read it that way. That's why I'm saying when it says at. Or that time, that means the time that it was accrued. And they're just reiterating that it's one and a half times.
Well, the, the language that I just read to you. I came up with from, with Martha.
Shall be paid for.
With accrued but unused compensatory time, may request to cash out their compensatory time at the employee's current rate of pay. So you're paying out the accrued but unused time at the current rate of pay.
Right.
Do you want the one out of the old union one? It's a little simpler language. You can take a look at it. See if you think of that one. I don't know if it reads any simpler or not. I just figured.
Read that.
Yeah, I think if you just take out that, so we're looking at that last sentence in the first paragraph, right?
Right.
So. Any non-exempt employee with accrued but unused comp, compensa. I can't say it. Thank you. Compensatory time shall be paid for that time at the employee's current rate of pay. So just take, take out those words, um, at one and a half times.
I like that.
Well, Martha said, I mean, you have to put a request into cash out. That's one of the things. Employee has to request it.
Well, that's in the second paragraph. That, that's in the next, or in the next sentence. But what Monique is saying is just get rid of at one and one half times, right? And just keep the employee's current rate of pay.
Now, the next sentence talks about carrying over.
No. No, it says for all non-union employees upon written request and approval of the trustees.
No more than 120 hours may be carried over.
Oh, you're, so it doesn't say, okay, I see what you're saying. For all non-union employees upon written. Request and approval of the trustees.
So why don't we just say carried over for the following year or paid out?
Or just add a new sentence after that, written, um, request and approval of the trustees is required for payout, something like that. Or you, are you saying you wanna keep that in that first paragraph? I understand, I think I understand what you're saying. You wanna have the payout information right there because you're talking about the pay. So you wanna keep it in that paragraph. Is that correct?
And so it's.
So if you just.
A simple sense, at the end of each calendar year, any non-exempt employee with accrued but unused comp time may request to cash out their comp time at the employee's current rate of pay. Simple sentence.
Okay.
To share business.
Let's, yeah, why don't you just put it in there?
Yeah.
Once I go through it again.
You've got five minutes, folks.
Which we're gonna have to wrap up then because you're our editor.
So, yeah. We're done after.
To be continued.
So really quick in four minutes' time.
In that last paragraph, do I add it? All non-union, non-exempt employees to make this consistent with everything else, because every other system says non-exempt.
Okay, and then I wanted to see if maybe in this little section here, we could put in something about call and pay. That was something that was in our old handbook on page 13. And we don't have anything in here about call and pay now. So if you look at page, page 13 in the old 2.7. Under overtime. It was actually 2.71. If any non-exempt employee is called to work before or after his or her scheduled work hours, he or she will be paid a minimum of three hours. It says. At straight time or three hours compensatory, compensatory time. An example of this would be a tree down on the road where employees called after hours to remove the tree. But I think it should just say if any non-exempt employee is called to work before or after his or her scheduled work hours, he or she will be paid a minimum of three hours.
Did you publish the December meetings yet?
No.
Oh, good. I think we're gonna add one or two. So I didn't respond. I'm like, let's see how today goes. Well, I think we did pretty good. We're not even.
I will think about calling.
I mean, okay.
So that on call would be for situations where the service department has to come in on a Saturday for a funeral. And would that hold true for?
The section.
The section as well.
Yeah, I think it should.
That's not just weekends. That's anything after hours.
Anything after hours, which again is stuff that you guys are doing right now and.
I don't have anything in the next section in 3.4, but can we take out 3.5 with time cards? Can we just delete that whole section?
Yes, and I do have something under 3.4.
Okay. Two minutes, Jack.
So Jack, you're gonna think about.
Change it to time sheets? That's what my question was.
No, because we already have it in there. Your call.
You could, yeah, I can see that. You could, because.
Official business record.
Yeah, time sheets, okay.
Okay. So we're gonna come back to call and pay and then rest and meal, workday, hours, rest and meal periods. At the next work session. Okay. Um, is there anything else really quick in one minute's time so that trustee Sweattick?
Do you wanna schedule the next work session? Or Jack, you have to like motor on out of here right away or? You have a minute that we can look at? Um, the six is already pretty booked. I, would you guys wanna do? The six is booked.
I'm already gonna be here at 5:30. We might as well just make it four.
Um.
No, that's gonna be a long.
I mean, are you guys okay doing one that's not on a Tuesday, like doing a Wednesday or a Thursday, or do you wanna do the 13th?
I could do the 30th.
I cannot do the 30th. I will be out of town.
I mean, it could be any day. I'm not opposed to a day outside of Tuesday. We just have to be conscientious of the schedules of our, our staff. Actually, a Monday might be better for Suzanne because you're already here till what time? Yeah. Do you have a preference, Mike?
I didn't even look at the calendar. I'm sorry. Whatever you do.
Need to be, you might go work.
They want to. The, the 12th.
12th, I cannot, I have a Christmas party. So I could do the 13th.
We can just come with you.
It's the Hinkley Police Department Christmas party. Rounder me.
What is Monique doing? Oh, she's zooming in. Um.
The 13th or the 7th, not 7th, I have another Christmas party.
That's the thing. It gets busy this time of year. It's very difficult to tackle these things. So I was thinking sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of town on the 30th, so I can't.
The 28th, you're out too.
No. Am I doing that next Monday?
I feel like I have something going on, but I can't remember what it is.
I can't tell you, but I don't know if I'll be here. So you guys.
I can't tell you that I don't know if I'm.
I don't know. You have proposed, proposed something and, because I have another calendar I have to look at.
Me too.
I, I'm pulling out all three of them.
Um. All right, well, what, what we'll do is we'll work through Suzanne. I'll shoot some dates to Suzanne, and if you guys are okay, she can reach out to you and see if we can work something. So at this time, I'd like to make it a motion to adjourn at 5:02 PM.
Second.
Seconded. What? We already did that. Seconded by Sweattick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.